Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board for Wednesday, April 27th, 2022. Present this evening, we have Richard Clark, Vice Chairman, Steve Wetrowa, Clerk of the Board, Thomas Chanacki, Member, and Daniel Edmiston, Member. Our town planner, Mr. Scanlon, is not here with us tonight. Myself, Guy Horn, Chairman. The first item we have on our agenda is a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments. It's a map under Tab B. Yep, I got it here. So, Notice of a Public Hearing, Dudley Planning Board, Proposed Zoning Amendments pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5. The Dudley Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April 27th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Dudley Municipal Complex, Room 321A, 71 West Main Street, Dudley, Mass, 01571. The three proposed zoning amendments are as follows. Number one, to see if the town will vote to amend the official Dudley zoning map by applying the Business 15 overlay district to nine properties on Southbridge Road identified as Assessor's Map 229, parcels numbers 146 through 154, as shown on the map entitled Proposed Business 15 Overlay District on Southbridge Road. The proposed zoning map amendment is on file with the town clerk and the planning board. Number two, to see if the town will vote to amend the official Dudley zoning map by replacing the existing groundwater aquifer protection overlay district with a revised groundwater aquifer protection overlay district, as shown on the map entitled Proposed Groundwater Aquifer Protection Overlay District based on the approved zoning...approved zone two. The approved zoning map amendment is on file with the town clerk and the planning board. Item number three, to see if the town will vote to amend the official Dudley zoning map by changing the zoning district for the property identified as Assessor's Map 211, Lot Number Nine, from Conservation to Residential 87. The property is on the northwest corner of the intersection of Marsh Road, Dudley Oxford Road, and Hayden Pond Road. It is shown on the map entitled Zoning Amendment Rezone Map 211, Lot Nine to Residential 87. The proposed zoning map amendment is on file with the town clerk and the planning board. The proposed amendments are on the town website and in the offices of the planning board and the town clerk, 71 West Main Street, Dudley, during the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM Monday through Thursday, and 8:00 AM to noon on Fridays. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the zoning amendment should appear at the time and place designated. Guy Horn, Chairman, Dudley Planning Board was advertised on April 8th and on April 15th, 2022. So, getting back to our agenda, the first item. They're a little bit different than the legal notice that I just read. The first one we're going to bring up tonight is the rezoning of a portion of the Conservation District to Res 87. So, Two, if you want to get Mrs. Williams on the phone?
Janice, are you still there?
Yes, I am, yes.
Okay. All right, so the first Warren article on our agenda is going to be the rezoning of a portion of the Conservation District to Res 87. So, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
My name's Karen Beth Gillan, and I live at 244 Dudley Oxford Road. I was asked by Christopher Marsh to submit a letter. He lives in the Conservation District that's indicated on the map, and he was unable to be here as he was traveling out of state for business. And I believe the board each has a copy.
Yeah. Would you like to read it, or would you want us to read it?
I could read it if you'd like.
If you don't mind, that'd be great.
Okay. Do you want me to sit or sit?
Sure, whatever's more comfortable for you.
I won't look so short if I sit. Thank you. Okay. This is a letter written by Christopher Marsh of 239 Dudley Oxford Road, Dudley, Mass, and it is to the Town Planning Board. The letter reads on as, "Sir or Madam, thank you again for the opportunity to speak at your last meeting. I would like to restate my opposition to rezoning the conservation land located on Dudley Oxford Road. As stated at the last meeting, this land is a watershed for Pier Pond, and building upon it would jeopardize the pond, as stated on the town's website, and he has it highlighted. Located at the crossroads of New England, the Town of Dudley offers its residents a wonderful quality of life: low taxes, great schools, fresh air, clean water, rolling green hills, and modern conveniences, all combined to make Dudley the place to live in central Massachusetts. If this land is developed, it will cause irreparable harm to the ecosystem supporting the pond and wildlife in this area, along with possibly jeopardizing the water table that residents rely on for water. This will also go against what makes Dudley the special place it is. I ask for you to please oppose the rezoning of this land, and to remember that once changes like this are made, they cannot be undone. Thank you. Christopher Marsh."
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak on that matter, on this matter? Mr. Wheelock?
I'd just like to ask, is this Warren article a citizen's petition, or is it written by the zoning, or?
It was brought to us by the owners of the property, you know, as it's not technically a citizen's petition. We were asked if we would put it on the Warren article, on the Warren, as an article, and we did.
Does the board support this Warren article?
Well, that's what we're having the public hearing for, to find out.
Oh, okay.
Did the gentleman want to speak to the issue, or was it just a procedural question?
No, it was just a procedural question, for now.
Okay. Ms. Williams, would you like to speak on the matter?
Well, yes, I would. My father was a dairy farmer in Dudley on Healy Road, and our farm is in the APR program, which is an agricultural protection restriction, 140 acres of it. So, we do contribute to the rolling hills of Dudley. The land on the Dudley Oxford Road, my father, before he died, just became aware that it had been put into a conservation district, and he wanted that land to be available for us because the farm cannot be built on. If anybody in the family wanted to build a house in Dudley, that land would be available. And it was only the year before he was diagnosed with stage four lung cancer, I believe it was in '96 in February, and he died in July. So, he never put the land into a conservation district. It was put in there, and he was totally unaware of it. He was a very busy dairy farmer, working from 6:30 in the morning until 7:00 at night, and he didn't follow town politics. And it was a great shock to him that it had been done. So, it was not what he wished to have done with the land. And if you're familiar with that land, I would say there is probably a maximum of two to three places where a house could be built. And we'd like to have it available so that if anyone in the family would like to build a house, it would be available.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mrs. Williams, is it?
Yeah.
Was your father Elliot Williams?
Yes, yes.
I think you might have understated his biography a little bit. He apparently was somewhat involved in the community, from what I have been able to...he was...
He was involved, he was involved with the Holden project, mainly to have drainage put onto our farm. Most of the land there has some drainage tile in it because it is a low-lying farm, and that was his main concern in the conservation, with the conservation department in Holden.
Okay, so he did have involvement with conservation. I also believe he had one of the founders of the Black Tavern organization, and master of the Grange at one time?
No, 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 he was no. He was not a political person at all.
Well, neither of those would be political positions, actually.
Well, no, he never wanted the limelight. No, he was never master of the Grange, who was a member of the Grange, but he never held a position. My mother did. I think she had, I can't remember now, a small position in the Grange for a few years. And our connection with the Black Tavern is, no, he was not a founder of the Black Tavern. Our family goes back to Esakiha Healy, who was the one who built the Black Tavern.
Well, I just mentioned that he was a man of some accomplishments.
Well, yes, he was, but he was a dairy farmer, and if you're, especially back then, if you're familiar with the life of a dairy farmer, it was 6:00 in the morning until 7:00 at night. So, he really didn't have time to do anything else.
From what I've been able to uncover, this area was zoned, as it currently is, as a result of a town meeting in February of 1969, where the article was passed unanimously by the 153 voting residents at that time.
Well, all I can tell you is that he was not aware of it until 1995, when he asked Connie Nederosik and Joanne Simsek to put it on the market as developable land. And it was a shock to him to find out what limitations the Town of Dudley had put on it. You know, I worked on the farm with my father for almost 50 years of my life. So, you know, I am intimately informed of what my father was thinking. I helped with the hay until I was 50 years old. So, you know, I think I know what my father's wishes were.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, but I have something I could add to the...about Connie Nederosik.
I'll defer.
Okay, if you want to come up, please.
Do you want me to hear?
Any one of the microphones with the chair.
Okay. I'm Jean Davis. I'm Janice Williams's sister. Here is a statement by Joanne Simsek, who is Connie Nederosik's daughter, who was also involved with putting the land on the market when my father...my father, as you know, dairy farmers are not a for-profit organization, especially back 53 years ago. So, that land was supposed to ease their retirement. When he found out, he was really in total dismay when he found out that he did not have that to sell for his retirement. I guess the only good thing you can say is he developed cancer and died in '96. He was very concerned about my mother having something to live on, and she only lived another 18 months and died in '97. So, I guess that's the only good thing you can say. They didn't have to live into a poverty-stricken state. So, this is a statement from Joanne Simsek that I have here. It's signed by Joanne. If you need a copy or whatever. She says, "As I am unable to attend tonight's meeting, I am submitting a brief summary regarding the Williams property. In the early 1990s, Mr. Williams asked Connie Nederosik and myself, Joanne Simsek, both realtors, to list and sell his 16-acre parcel. He believed it was suitable for building. At this time, we discovered in researching the property that it had become a conservation land classification. This basically erased his parcel's highest and best use of land suitable to develop. Mr. Williams indicated to us he had no prior knowledge of this change happening to his property. He was under the impression it was potentially a parcel that could be developed. I know it was not his intent to donate this land or place it into a preservation-type classification. It was his intent to keep its highest and best use for development purposes. He owned other land, which would be our 146 acres of farm, which he had made arrangements for preserving in his desired fashion. That land is in APR land, in the APR program now. That's the Agricultural Preservation Restriction Program now, and will never be developed. That's 146 acres. This change occurred when town government was not as precise with documentation, notification, and discussions being as open as they are today. Today, non-knowledgeable people can get assistance in understanding how a zoning change will affect their use of their property, since they have full-time or professional part-time employees who can assist them. I hope this consideration can be given to restore the land to its former state of being land suitable for development per zoning, as I do believe this was the intent of the owner who truly wanted to have, the owner truly wanted to have, per the conversations that occurred at this time. Sincerely, Joanne Simsek, Realtor."
Okay. Thank you for reading that. Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
Well, what's, I guess, is interesting is that a large part of that land is no longer in conservation. Two house lots have been taken out of it. One was sold, one given to the owner's child, and then they were paid for the rest of their land by the town. And you know, I guess the question is, how did that happen? Another portion of the land was taken, it was, there was a house on that land, and that was rezoned as Residential 43. How did that happen?
How big are those house lots, Mr. Chairman? I'm just wondering how big those house lots are.
One is three acres, one is two acres. I have...
But I wouldn't say that, to your point, I wouldn't say that necessarily constitutes a large portion of...didn't you just say 140 acres?
No, no, we're talking about this, that's our farm on Healy Road, which is in APR conservation.
I understand, but the statement was, correct me if I'm wrong, the statement was...
Yeah, I'm afraid.
...that a large portion of the conservation land was taken out of conservation now.
I am differentiating between APR land and conservation land. When I say conservation land, I mean the land on the Dudley Oxford Road.
So, the 140 acres is still in conservation?
Well, yes, it's an APR in perpetuity. It will never be taken out. Those are two different parcels of land that my father, my family, own.
I'm just trying to make sure that we're clear that that's not...
No, I am talking about the 1969 parcel of land that was put into conservation. I have the plans for those house lots, if you need to see them. I have the information and the years that was done.
The chairman just pointed them out to me.
Okay.
They're not labeled, but I now see what you're talking about.
So, two house lots, one three acres, one two acres, and then there was eight acres that belonged, this was to a relative of ours, that they were paid for. I don't, I do not know how much. On the other side, the woman that owned that land, that house and 10 acres, and how you could put somebody's house into a conservation zone, I wonder at that. How could that happen? She sold it for much less than its value because she was told it was in conservation, apparently. But somehow, the next owner who had bought it had it reverted to Residential 43. So, how did that happen? You know, my father was not, you know, he was not out and about, hanging out in town hall. So, he would have no way of knowing what was going on with that land. And it seems there should be some fairness here for my family.
Okay. Can I get a copy of your letter?
If you have a means of making a copy, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Two, could you make two of those?
Yeah, I'd probably make all of them.
Are you all set?
I guess, yeah, unless you have any other questions.
Was your question directly to her, or?
No. But just as a side comment, we talked about this, last time this came up, we talked about how could this happen? Mistakes were made, obviously, but we can't continue to be held accountable for mistakes of previous employees or boards. I think it's well documented that there are four houses in this conservation zone. Two of them are grandfathered in because they predate the 1969, and two of them were issued building permits, probably when they shouldn't have been, and have been built. That does not necessarily mean that we should continue to make the same mistake.
Well, I'd like to add one more thing. The conservation land, other than that parcel that my family's land is involved in, I do not believe that any other land was actually taken by the town. I believe that any other conservation parcels were either donated or paid for. And...
Yeah, I'll have somebody else come over.
And a part of that parcel on the Dudley Oxford Road, the owners were paid for, reimbursed for it. So, to have taken away land, negated its value, how can you do that?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a clarification because we went over this last time also. The town of, the land in question is still owned by you, but it was placed in conservation by the town. It was not taken by the town. I have a problem with the wording.
It is worthless. Its value was taken. Its value was taken. That's what was taken.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, so now, but sir, we now have land that has no value. And that was never my father's intent, never the family's intent.
May I add something?
Yes.
Our farm on Healy Road of Butts Nichols College, we were offered a very large amount of money for the farm. And with the political connections of Nichols, I'm sure it would eventually be taken out of APR. They claimed they wanted it as a buffer zone. Well, we refused the offer. We're not interested in just selling land for large developments. We could have made a great deal of money selling that land to Nichols, the farm, to Nichols College, but we didn't. We are both retired teachers, so we're not living in the lap of luxury. And that land, obviously, on the Dudley Oxford Road, was not put into APR by my father specifically. So, it would be available for people in the family, if somebody wanted to build a house there, or to sell it. And very little of that land is really appropriate for housing. So, it's not going to turn into a huge development if it's taken out of conservation. And that's something we don't want to see either.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, either of the ladies, is this land Chapter 61 currently?
It's Conservation 1A.
It is, yes, for tax purposes.
61A?
Yes.
Well, they're basically a penalty, depending on, but there are time limits involved, too. It's not straight-line, it's...
Sure, it's complicated.
Excuse me, I just, I don't live in the conservation, excuse me, district. I live across the street. However, in reference to, unless I misunderstood, Jeanne, the two houses that are in the Conservation District that have been built, has already been addressed at the last meeting, and you referenced that. There was a parcel of land that was adjacent to the Williams land that belonged to my grandmother, Ethel Romer. And it was not sold, it was not donated. We discussed this at the last meeting, as that land was taken by the Army Corps of Engineers, engineers back in the 50s, for eminent domain. And according to the contract or whatever, it was supposed to be returned, at first, the heirs to the land, which would have been my father, Albert, would have had first rights of refusal. There was, my father was very interested in, you know, obtaining that land and keeping it in the family and keeping it as it is. There was a hearing at the dam in Oxford, at which point they found out that it had been posted incorrectly, the wrong town had been notified about it. There was some sort of glitch, so that it had to, you know, go back to, the Town of Dudley had to be notified, et cetera. We had never heard any more about it. And that's what my brother was speaking to. And I was a young person at that time, so I can't speak to what exactly happened, but I just wanted to clarify for the record that it's my understanding that the Town of Dudley owns that land, that strip of land. And it was not, this, my family never received any compensation for conservation land, and we did not donate it. So, I just wanted to clarify that, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Wheelock?
My name is Paul Wheelock, and I'm also president of the Conservation Land Trust. Just some contact... Just some context here is that Ms. Davis and Ms. Williams reached out to, uh, Mass Audubon about a year, year and a half ago, to, uh, sell the land to Mass Audubon. Mass Audubon reached out to us, and we were in the process of collaborating with Mass Audubon to try and purchase this property. So, I'm just trying to find out what the change in tune is from these people. Or is it just to raise the value of the property to get more money out of Mass Audubon?
Ms., Ms. Williams, would you want to speak to that?
Um, why don't you have my sister speak to that?
Okay. She's coming back.
We have family members, you, as you know, this is an insane real estate market. I'm sure that many of you people are involved in real estate. We would like to have two to three parcels available for family members to build on for the next generation. That's what we would like, and we may possibly have to sell one of them. Yes, we do need, we've got an ancient barn that we are, it's one of the oldest, it's probably the oldest functioning barn in Dudley, that we are trying to keep up. I would hope the town of Dudley has some appreciation of what it takes to keep a, a more than two hundred fifty year, it's about two hundred fifty year old barn standing. As far as the Audubon goes, the rest of what, which, what cannot be sold, which we, we don't plan on selling all of it. We don't want to see eight houses there. The Audubon, you know, can offer, will offer us what they offer. I have no idea what their offer would have been or will be.
Right. Anybody else have anything else they would like to add?
I own the property at fifteen Marsh Ave, which is adjacent to the Williams property. You keep on mentioning the property in Oxford Dudley Road, and having driven by and walked through that, that section, that is not buildable. It is vernal pools, uh, waterways, and generally speaking, i- it's going to be wetlands. I'm not sure what section they have that would be buildable. And I would suggest that if you're going to take part of, if you're going to take something out of conservation, find out where the buildable lots are, and see if they can take those out of con, uh, conversation, at conservation, and leave the rest of it in. That way, the waterways, the vernal pools, and the, uh, the watershed, the pond, are all still protected. Um, I don't oppose building in the area. People need to, to have houses and all that. But those wetlands do need protection. So, instead of maybe taking the whole sixteen acres out, take the buildable lots out and leave the rest in. Would be my, my thought on this whole thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, may I speak, please?
Sure, go ahead, Mrs. Williams.
Oh, sure.
Um, when, when we, if and when we are given permission to take out probably two house lots, the rest will probably be sold to the Audubon people. If we sell it to them under its present zoning, it's worthless. If it's sold as land that's possibly developable, it will be, um, much more valuable land. And it would be extremely helpful to us if we could sell it under those conditions, rather than as conservation land, much devalued conservation land.
Mr. Chairman, I would argue that wetlands are worthless land, no matter what you zone it as. You can call it whatever you want. If it's wetlands, it's worthless. Once you cut out whatever section of this property might be able to support house lots, whatever's left over, there's a reason why nobody would pay anything for it. Whatever's left over is wetlands, it's unbuildable. It has very little value, other than for conservation purposes, wildlife habitat.
Well, it has, it has been looked at by people who, um, who do building, and it was, they found it to be something that could be developed. Which, as I said before, it's not what we want to see either, but we do want to have two, uh, at, probably at most, three house lots available for younger people in the family who are being cut out of the house, this crazy housing market. And I, you know, who knows in the future, you know, will they be cut out of homeownership completely? Um, and that land, until the town of Dudley took its value away, was available to us. It's why it wasn't put into the APR. My father specifically didn't put it into the APR. So that it would be available if somebody wanted to build a house. And now, the town of Dudley has removed that possibility.
So, through the chair, Mrs. Williams.
Yeah, well, this was, this was for thirty years.
So-
My father was unaware of what the town of Dudley, of Dudley had done to that land.
So, we've established, nineteen sixty-nine, the vote is taken and it's put into conservation. Twenty-six years later, you say is the first time that your father was made aware of the fact that it was placed into conservation, correct?
And, and exactly what that meant. He, no, a man who worked from six, six AM until seven PM was not someone who hung around the town hall trying to find out what was being done. He was working from morning till night.
I guess to my point.
Yeah, yeah.
In nineteen ninety-six, when he wa, in nineteen ninety-six, when the family became aware of this, since nineteen ninety-six, prior to this year, when you brought it forward to this board, what actions have you taken to attempt to, uh, to change this? To get, to get your property back to a buildable state or into residential?
Um, we, well, we, we started working on it, um, thinking, and, and still not realizing what the town had the power to do. There's not one iota of evidence, my father never signed anything, never knew of anything, never gave permission for anything. The value of that land was just taken. And we, we still couldn't get it through our heads that, uh, that the town could do such a thing without notifying people, that it had been done. And we started having the wetlands programmed, and then it became more and more clear that tough luck. You know, it's really not your land anymore. Yeah, we can cut firewood on it, that's what we can do with it. And I don't know of even that. We have to have permission from the town of Dudley.
Could I add something, please?
Mr. Chairman, this is going in circles here.
All right.
I don't know if anybody else has anything to say, but at some point in time, we have to stop the circle talk.
No, this is something else to say.
We're hearing the same comments over and over and over again.
Okay, sir, this is something else to say. And you wanted to know what we did. In two thousand three, we're going to put it on the warrant, and then for some reason, we were told not to, not to enter it that time. What we did do-
By whom?
By whoever, I, who was the head of conservation in two thousand, uh, of, um, the planning board in two thousand three?
Probably George Lang, though.
It could have been Mr. Breyer.
Yeah.
That doesn't, I-
Did you bring it to a town meeting, or?
Yes, it was on the warrant. We were there, ready to vote.
Yes, absolutely. And I, I gave quite a long explanation at the town meeting, thinking that it was going to be voted on. And then word came down to us, Mr., uh, I believe, Mr. Whitney was um, the head of the Board of Selectmen or the town manager, I can't remember which.
Might have been the town moderator at the time.
No, don't have it voted on.
Sounds like it was passed over.
Passed over, yeah. So, this is what I'm gonna say-
And I don't know, we still don't really know why, why it was decided, but we were told, ask that it not be voted on.
So, Ms. Williams, what I, what I hear from you tonight, you're saying you would like to have two or three house lots available for family members. You have a total of sixteen, over sixteen acres of land. If we were to rezone it at rez eighty-seven, a house lot would be two acres. So, all you would need to build three houses would be six acres, taken out of, taken out of conservation, not the whole sixteen acres. Would you-
Yes, but were we to sell it to the Audubon as, in its present state, as conservation land, it is worth almost nothing.
Not if you have your house lots.
If we sell it to them as land, as land that is zoned for building, it, it's value would quite a bit, quite a bit more. So, you know, what you have done is taken the, the value of that land away from us. And as I said before, we were offered a great deal of money by Nichols College for our farm, which we refused.
Okay.
So, um, you know, it, it's-
Mr. Chairman, I applaud you. I see where you go with that.
You know, I've been accused of, we've been accused of going against our father's wishes. We've been accused, you know, just accused of everything. And, um, I'm sorry, but, you know, what you have done is devalued-
It's, it's not, it's not us, because we weren't here in nineteen sixty-nine, I'm sorry.
But you are upholding what they did. I'd like to add that we did have a title search done, and they didn't find, I don't understand how nothing was done to the deed to show that there were encumbrances on that property. The search, this was in two thousand three, showed no encumbrances at all. So, I, that, I may not live in the real world, but I don't understand how that could happen.
Because I think it was because it was a zoning change and not necessarily a real estate change.
Yeah, it wasn't an owner, ownership change.
Right. All right. Is there anybody else, Mr. Wheelock? One last time, and this is it?
All right.
And if that lady wants to speak, because she did get up and-
I don't know, I just think this is, this is a bad, we've set a bad precedent for the town to take a land.
The precedent has already-
Come on, one at a time, please, okay? We've heard.
This was set a really a bad precedent for the town. This all started back in nineteen sixty-nine. Between nineteen sixty-nine and nineteen ninety-five, her father could have taken this land out if, if he, if he wanted to. And to me, it sounds like it's just a ploy to get more money out of Mass Audubon.
Are you implying too that we're going against our father's wishes?
I never met your father, so I don't know.
I, you may very well have. He knew many Wheelocks.
Okay, thank you.
A precedent, could I just say, a precedent has already been set. Two house lots have already been taken out of that. That is a precedent that's already been set. Three, eight, no, there are two houses. One that has a three acre lot, and another that has a two acre lot.
And what, and what zone are they in?
What zone are they in?
What zone do those houses find themselves in?
They were in the, I can show you where they are, in the conservation zone.
Correct, so they haven't been taken out. They're in the conservation zone still.
But they built houses on conservation-
I understand that, but they're in the conservation-
But we cannot build houses in-
I understand that as well.
All right, now, where is the fairness in that? That's a precedent that has already been set. And I'd also like to add, are you Karen Romer?
Karen Gillan, yes.
Karen Romer, yes, Gillan. Have you seen, I believe that your parents did get eight thousand dollars for that eight acres, something like that. I have, I, I have been-
Mr. Chairman, this is getting way too personal.
This is not part of our, our, our agenda.
But it, this is very personal, yes.
It's personal, but it's not part of our agenda. Our agenda is for the article warrant, and we've asked for public input. You've given it, we've, we've had your input twice. We've got a letter from your realtor. We've heard from the Butters. We've got two other articles we got to get to, plus another public hearing.
All right, thank you.
Did we close the hearing?
No, we still got two others to go.
She hasn't spoke.
She hasn't spoke.
I just have a quick question. So, even if we take it up, because it's wetlands, they can't build on it, right?
It may not be buildable lots. You, you need, would you please identify yourself?
Oh, Megan Carey, I live on fifteen Marsh Road. Um, yeah, so if it's wetlands and it's part of the watershed of Pier Point Pond, which is what we kind of established last time we were here doing all this, um, it's unbuildable anyway, right? Because it's wetlands and we live in Massachusetts.
If the land didn't perk, you can't build a house there. There's no water and sewer in that area.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, and they would have to stay one hundred feet away from the-
Yeah, it's big, how far away you have to stay, because we just bought the house.
Feet outside of the buffer zone and one hundred feet away from any water.
Animals and stuff like that, right? A hundred and fifty, it's, yeah, it's a lot of rules.
The problem is, this has never been flagged for wetlands. So, this is all conjecture at this point.
Right.
We've heard a lot of testimony from neighbors saying, ah, it's very wet back there. There's a, you know, there's this, there's that. And you may very well be right, I'm not saying you're not, but because it's never been flagged, we couldn't say for sure what would be definitely unbuildable and what could be buildable. The only way to find that out would be if they had the wetlands, had it flagged for wetlands, which they're not going to go through that expense unless there's a payday at the end for them to build something.
We've seen it before, that where if, um, I think a lot has to have, what is it, seventy percent of land? Right, so you could theoretically have a lot big enough that contains twenty-five percent wetlands, and split that wetlands over four or five properties. Now you have whatever it happens to be divided up. You can't build right on it or with it, but it can't be part of that property. So, it all comes down to who your engineer is, and what the wetlands, how they get flagged, and then what the design actually is, the contours, there's a lot of variables. But it would be possible to build around those and to have those as part of, of property.
On the property.
Yep.
But they'd have to follow all the wetland laws.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
That would be up to their engineer.
My sister did have somebody looking into wetlands.
Okay.
She did have a nap, but I don't think that they were ever actually-
All right.
Southbridge Road. And they changed. They're only good, you know, if you have a flag, it's only good for so many years and then-
Right. Okay, so the next, the next warrant article that we're, we're going to talk about tonight is, uh, Southbridge Road, Business Fifteen Overlay District. Is there anybody here that would like to speak about that? Want to come up?
I, I don't, you talking about-
Yep.
Yeah. I don't really have anything to say. I'm happy that it's happening.
Okay, so-
That's something. You just said it.
All right, just so for the public's knowledge, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine lots on, uh, the northern side of Route, uh, one thirty-one. Dudley, actually, Southbridge Road. These nine lots, right now, are in the rez eighty-seven district. A portion of one of those lots is in the industrial forty-three district. All of these lots would be rezoned to the Business Fifteen District. One of the lots is currently being used as a business, and has, has gotten a business license from the town of Dudley. And then later was told that it's not properly zoned for business, so that's why we're changing the zoning to the Business Fifteen Overlay District, so that one lot and all the other lots would now be available for residential and business use. So, if anybody, nobody has any talk? Okay. The last one we have to talk about this evening is the revision of the Water Aquifer Protection District. Is there anybody that wanted to talk about that? The last meeting we held, we had one of the commissioners here present, and he was in agreement to the, uh, the new district. It's basically making it smaller. It's basically making it smaller.
I don't think so.
So, the current existing district is, the current existing Aquifer Protection District is one thousand sixty-seven point seven acres. It would be rezoned and proposed to go down to four hundred and ninety acres, giving a difference of five hundred seventy-seven point seven acres. That would be out of the Aquifer Protection District. So, those are the three warrant articles.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We're not actually taking any action on any of these warrant articles this evening, correct? 'Cause they're all, they're all-
We're gonna close the public hearing, and then we can, we have a choice, we can either vote on them tonight, or we can vote on them before the town meeting.
Okay, all right.
We have to make a recommendation to the town meeting.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear, because if we were, then obviously I wouldn't let everybody know, but if we can-
It's up, it's up to you, if you want to-
Well, it's, like you said, if you're ready to close the public-
Well, is there any work, are there any comments about the Aquifer?
No.
No.
Nope, okay.
Yep.
Is there anything else you need from us about that, so that will be, so, just, just go vote the town meeting?
Yeah, you have to go to the town meeting in May.
Oh, in May, it's still going on?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's when it'll happen.
That's when it'll happen.
Yep.
Is there anything else we need from us?
Nope, we have all the paperwork we need from you.
You got a petition and everything, is it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, just one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so seeing no, no other comments, I'm gonna close the public hearing at, was it eight fifty, or seven fifty? And what's the board's pleasures? Did you, would you gentlemen want to vote on these articles tonight? Make a recommendation to town meeting tonight, or do you want to wait till the, the night, the night of the town meeting and our regu- regularly scheduled meeting before the town meeting, we can vote then?
So, just a quick question, they're already on the town warrant, correct?
Right.
So, we're just voting if we're sponsoring these or not? Even without our sponsorship, they're still on the?
They're, they're sponsored, we're voting if we're gonna endorse them or not.
Okay.
That's what we're voting on.
I would recommend that we vote on it tonight, one at a time.
Okay. All right, so let's take the first one, the rezoning of a portion of the Conservation District to rez eighty-seven. Are we gonna, are we gonna recommend this to the town meeting? Or, if we don't recommend it, we could pass it over for more information, it's up, it's up to the board.
I don't necessarily need more information.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're good.
I mean, the other thing is, all, all of these, all of these warrant articles are zoning changes, so they will require two-thirds majority vote at town meeting. So, even if the planning board endorses it, and it goes to town meeting, and there's not sixty-seven percent people voting yes, it still doesn't pass. All right.
You looking for motions, or you would-
Yep, so anyone wanna make a motion on the first one? The rezoning of the Conservation District to rez eighty-seven.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, the planning board does not sponsor or does not endorse the rezoning of the portion of the Conservation District to rez eighty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous. The next one, Southbridge Road, Business Fifteen Overlay District, somebody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we sponsor the Southbridge Road Business Fifteen Overlay District.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll make a motion in a second, for Southbridge.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Number three, revision of the Aquifer Protection District.
Make a motion that we change the Aquifer District.
We have a motion. We have a motion, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In unanimous, okay. That's where it stands with the planning board right now. I mean, it's still gonna be on the warrant at the town meeting, if you can get enough people to vote for it, but, or, the other thing would be to pass it over, and then you guys can get more information. I mean, if, if you only need three house lots, I would be looking at trying to take out six acres instead of sixteen acres, it's gonna be a lot easier. That's just my opinion.
We did not write the warrant, the planning board wrote the warrant.
Okay.
Oh, boy, the planning board didn't write this one, no.
The next we have the continuation of a public hearing on the redevelopment of Stevens Linen Mill. Gentlemen, if you could come up, sorry for the delay.
It's all right, it's interesting. Town meeting season, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Stephen McDouse and Mark O'Connell. With me this evening is Matt Murva of Bowler Engineering. We really have two matters, I think, to report to the board. And I know the town planner's not here, but the assistant town planner is here. One matter that I want to probably discuss after Mr. Murva goes over the updated plans is the quantum of vote that would be required to approve this project, because as you may be aware, there were revisions to Chapter Forty-eight for special permits that were adopted in two thousand and one, or effective in two thousand and one, that for a project with ten percent affordable housing, multifamily, and mixed use in a commercial corridor, the general law now provides it maybe, it shall be approved by a majority vote. And I don't know if the town planner provided for the board, the town council's opinion that if this board makes those determinations, that would be the quantum of vote to approve this special permit for the mill conversion. But before we get to that, I can't recor-, we did present the driveway modification last time, and that was, the board approved the concept, and now the engineering has been updated, incorporated, the groundwater report has been updated for the revised site. And now Matt can take you through all that work that was done to improve the project, I think.
Could I just ask, before you start, on the driveway addition, did you get the, all the legal work done, all the easements and everything are in place now?
Almost, the, um, so another attorney in my firm is doing it, that's why I don't have a real definitive answer, but I haven't heard that there's, he was on vacation last week, was school vacation. But I know Matt's office supplied us with a easement plan for the two parties, and the terms were agreed upon, so I, my expectation is yes. But I, I'll, I'll get confirmation for the board on that.
Okay. Great, go ahead, sir.
Great, thank you. Matt Murva with Bowler, as Stephen mentioned. Really just here tonight to answer any questions you might have on the updated plans that we submitted April fifteenth. Essentially, it's the same driveway configuration that you had seen the last time we were here. The, the one minor change is that we eliminated a section of parking right in this zone here that was shown on the previous plan, you would have seen, right here. But the, the drive, can you see that? I'm sorry.
Actually, I'm gonna come up there and look at that.
Absolutely. Other than that, our, we've really just been tasked with doing the, the more hard engineering on the, the plan that we've kind of come up with together over the past few months.
So, is your final count of that's gone?
Really, other than providing more detailed, sort of the full set, the drawings, that have all of the grading, utilities updated, landscape, like, everything's been updated to, to work with the new configuration here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, is your, your latest plan showing less parking than previous plan?
A few, ten less spaces, that's correct, but it's still more than the required quantity.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, what was the, the benefit of eliminating those ten? Was it, there must have been a positive effect somewhere along the line?
Well, the, the place where they were located is starting to be down, down gradient, downhill, closer to the riverfront area, more difficult to build, and not really a hundred percent necessary for, for what we're trying to do here. So, in terms of resource area impact, we're minimizing that, and really just construction, construction efforts in that zone will be minimized.
And your new plan, does it show in all, all the detail, the, the walk, along the riverwalk and all of that, or is it just the proposed?
We're, we're still focused on this area, we do have the riverwalk dashed in here, as, as we previously shown it on, on this plan here. So, that is still part of, part of the plan set.
Chairman, if I may, there was still some issue regards to National Grid and making contact with some amorphous being in that realm. Did that ever happen?
It did, we found the right person finally, who was aware of the project, and very much interested on behalf of National Grid. I think of being cooperative, if you will, so we're encouraged by our discussions with them about that.
Is that interest in cooperation actionable?
I, I'm hoping it will be, yes. We had a meeting last week, the principals came up and met on the site with the representative from National Grid, and we're pursuing that.
That Thursday of last week, I noticed some activity there, I think.
I think it was, yes, yeah, I'm trying to remember that.
I'm just curious, is there, how much longer are we gonna be going with this? I mean, this public hearing has lasted longer than most mini-series do on TV.
Right, well-
We must be getting to an end point somewhere.
Right, I hope so, yeah, yeah, I hope so as well, it's, but it's, you know, it's a large project, it's difficult, I'd say, to, I mean, Matt does a lot of real estate development, to convert a, a mill to a different purpose. I think the project has benefited, you know, for that second means of egress now to mills.
I appreciate all of that, but, but we've got some hard numbers coming, hard dates coming up.
Yes.
We got a town meeting, we got a town election.
Right.
We need to move the elephant here.
We agree, and that's part of the discussion about the quantum of vote, but we were getting our revised plans in hoping that we'd have the peer review comments to respond to for tonight, but it, it didn't happen. But that, you know, we were hoping that tonight would be pretty close to the end. I, I hope that the next meeting might be-
Yeah, our, our intent would be to work with the peer reviewer over the next two weeks, and be ready to come back to you at the next meeting on the eleventh for, for a vote, if we can.
Have you been in touch with the peer reviewer to confirm that, you know, that, you know, coordinate that and work together?
That's, we're working on that, we did reach out last week, it is, you know, town meeting season, a lot of folks are, are busy, and, and we, we are fully intent upon trying to get this closed out at the next hearing, and, and absolutely want to try to work together to resolve any outstanding issues there may be on the details of the drawings. We've provided the drainage report, we've provided all of the information that the peer reviewer would need to run through, and, and have made ourselves available to, to review with them, so we'll keep following up in that capacity as well.
Mr. Chairman, I would submit that, lacking the peer review, I don't know that there's much more that we could go forward with here at this point.
I do have a couple of general questions.
Oh.
Just a handful of questions.
Sure.
The first one is, I know that the parkings, the parking stalls are nine by eighteen, I think it was also smaller size. Do you have a breakdown of, of where the larger ones are and where the smaller ones, or not just the quantity of each?
Yes, the, the accessible spaces, which are eight by eighteen, I believe that's what you're referring to, correct?
I just remember seeing two different stall sizes on there. I just don't recall what the breakdown was, or if the breakdown was given between quantities for each.
To, to my knowledge, the, the difference is really just in the accessible versus the, the full size, unless you know of, of something different.
So, what's a full size then? Are they eight feet wide or nine feet wide?
The full size are nine feet wide, the accessible spaces, the cap spaces are eight, eight feet wide.
Accessible are the eight, okay.
That's correct, 'cause they have the aisle in between each space.
The hash mark thing with nobody, okay, yeah.
As far as the stormwater drainage is concerned, there's a lot of sheet draining. It appears that a lot of that gets captured into structures, and then gets sent to the underground retention systems. From the drawings, I wasn't able to tell, do the storm, does the retention systems, is the stormwater then, is that a filtering to get emptied into the, the river basin, or is that back into the groundwater? What's your intent with the stormwater basins?
So, sorry, everything came off the left here. The intent is to infiltrate, and, and this is all provided in the, the stormwater calculations, which your peer reviewer is looking at now.
Yep.
But the, the downfall for the overflow does go into, into this area here. You can see those, those outfalls are collecting whatever doesn't get infiltrated.
So, those are for overflow only, so whatever doesn't infiltrate, or if there's a heavy rain or whatever, there might be some overflow that goes towards basin.
That's, that's correct, as it does now. It's really, we need to match the, the pre-existing condition with the, the post-development condition, and have no more rate of runoff into that resource area than was there before, and so the system's been designed to accommodate that.
I didn't actually measure the distance between a lot of the manholes, but it seems there was a lot of sheet drainage and not a lot of manholes or catch, catch basins? I'm assuming there was some kind of engineering guideline that you're bound to on those?
Uh, we, we are, there, there's capacity in those, those basins that we have to design to, and they've been, they've been sized appropriately for the size of the lines that we have, and the, the amount of sheet flow going to them.
But when you've got, you know, just a hundred and fifty linear feet of, of sheet flow going towards one catch basin, it just seems like there's a lot of water flowing that could theoretically ice up. It just seems to me there's a lot, large distance between the catch basin slash manholes.
Uh, I mean, we've looked at it pretty carefully, it, it's not, it's not an unusual practice to have, to have sheet flow come all the way across a parking lot, I see your point.
Yep.
From here to here, that distance is all going into a catch basin, but, but the, the drain lines are sized for that, the, the catch basin openings are sized for that, so it's, it's been designed per engineering standard.
The stormwater plans only showed stormwater drainage from the site work, not from the building itself? What happens with the building stormwater?
Uh, there are roof leaders, I believe, that are tied into that, that basin system.
So, the drawings didn't show anything from any roof leaders, and they wouldn't show anything going into the underground systems?
There are, there are a few locations, you can see them here, I can, sorry, I can see from here, I can see the dark lines from here. Yeah. The, the dark lines come off the roof and into this main trunk line.
Right, and those are for, just for that small, little building, but you've got a large area of building, there's, what's it, footprints fifty thousand square feet, so we're talking about maybe ten thousand square feet, where's that, if you're showing? On the upper portions of the building, you know, the main portion that's running from, you know, from east to west on the top of the plan, there's really nothing shown there, nor are there any catch bas-, any underground storm retention systems up on that side. Is the building internally drained, or does it have, it's internally drained, right, roof drains?
I, I believe so, if-
So, I don't know where those drain to, but I'm sure that the stormwater protection guidelines and rulings have changed since eighteen whatever. So, just trying to figure out where those are currently going, and if, if they're gonna get part of, if being included in the stormwater drainage plan.
Uh, yes, and we'll, we'll certainly clarify that ahead of the next meeting, if, if there's anything missing off that plan. We'll, we'll be working through it with the, the peer reviewer over the next couple of weeks, but I, I believe that's been accounted for in what you see here.
Okay.
Uh, but if it's not, I, I take your comment back to the office, and we'll, we'll make sure it's accounted for.
Thank you.
You bet.
And as a last comment, just kind of, as a feeling, I realize that the site is incredibly tight, and you have a large number of parking spaces to get into that tight space. I just have the impression that the parking lots really would be confusing to drive.
Uh, any, any spot in particular, or?
Basically, when you're, just along the whole riverside. Like I said, it's not, not that it matters, it's just a comment, I mean, you need, you need to get to certain spots, number of spaces in there, I understand, I understand everything's tight. Imagine if people are actually living there, they'll be able to find their way through it, try to find a parking spot, but-
Yeah, I mean, you do end up with some funky angles with these old mill buildings. We, we've done our best to accommodate kind of a clean path of travel. When you come in here, there's really kind of one main parking aisle that borders the entire riverfront. And then really, I, I kind of look at, at, is two loops off of that. There's one here that gets you a little closer to the building here, and there's another one here off of that main spine, but there really is kind of one main spine there.
I see most traffic coming in from the northern side, and then they have to, of course, they're, they're not gonna wanna park out in that field, so they're gonna try to get close to the building as possible, which means they'll circle around two or three times and see if there's anything open before they possibly head back out.
Mm-hmm.
But again, it's just a comment.
I guess it really depends too on what the internal layout ends up being, you know, what, what entrances they're gonna be using.
Mm-hmm.
You know, depending on where your unit is, you're gonna-
That's true too.
So-
That's all I got. Thank you for your responses.
Thank you for your comments, thank you. No, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm out.
So that was our questions for tonight.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, could, could the board consider the quantum of vote question, or do you want to defer that?
Do you need an answer tonight?
Well, I'd like to start it because as the vice chairman mentioned, this has gone on and with the, I understand one member intends to not participate in the vote, so that will be four, and then we're coming upon the election season, hopefully we won't be that far along. But the quantum of vote is going to matter, obviously, if a majority vote is available to us. My sense is I'd rather have the board deliberate about that in a kind of a calm moment rather than when we're running out of highway. But I can just present it if you want to reserve it after I present the issue that, section nine of chapter forty-eight on special permits.
Mr. Chairman, I, I definitely think we should get into this. I, you know, by now, we're all aware of the letter from our board member to the selectman and his feeling that he does not wish to partake in any vote regarding this project. And we've been here, this board, most of us have been here from the beginning of this project. And I really think, when you take into account that this particular planning board member is going to sit this one out and not vote either way, that with the election coming up and with one of our other board members choosing not to run again, we could be placed into a situation where you've got a new board member coming on who hasn't even been part of this process at all. And we could, we could basically torpedo this whole project, which I hate to say it, but I think that's part of the intent here. That the requirement of the supermajority is, I think some people are putting some hope into that basically killing this project. So I would love to hear about how there may be a legal way for a simple majority to vote on this project. And we could always request the town council's opinion on whatever we hear tonight and vote on it on the next meeting. I think I'm about to be handed something I probably should have read in my documents that were sent to me.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, you know, Governor Baker advanced legislative package included in that to promote housing opportunities in light of the housing crisis in the Commonwealth. And one of the bigger pieces is this terminology about MBTA communities and a requirement for multifamily housing. This is not part of that, that, it was part of this package, but this was a separate amendment to the general laws to promote multifamily housing with afford, at least ten percent affordable, which of course this project is required to have under both the local bylaw and the TIF agreement that town meeting approved and the Department of Housing and Development approved, that requires a ten percent affordable housing. And it's obviously multifamily, the zoning bylaw requires the mixed use, you know, we've got that non-residential use within the project, reserved for community space and, and maybe some other commercial tenancy at a later date. So it does qualify as mixed use. The term that is probably the only open term as to whether this benefits from the revision to forty-eight nine that allows a special permit for such a project by majority vote is whether it is within a commercial district of the town. And the provision reads that a special permit issued by a special permit granting authority, the planning board, shall require a simple majority vote for any of the following, and there's A, which is not applicable. B, mixed use development in centers of commercial activity within a municipality, including town and city centers, other commercial districts in cities, and cities and towns, rural village, rural village districts, provided that not less than ten percent of the housing shall be affordable to be occupied by households who, whose annual income is less than eighty percent of the area-wide medium income, median income of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, that's the DHCD requirement anyway. And affordability is assured for a period of not less than thirty years, that's a requirement of the TIF agreement as well. So our view is, and the email from town council, I won't speak for, I think you have a copy of it, seems to concur, so long as this board determines that the project is in a area of commercial activity, and it is zoned in addition to being in the mill conversion overlay district, it's in the industry, industry district and has that close proximity to Main Street downtown.
Mr. Chairman, would anybody object to me reading town council's reply to this question as to whether or not this qualifies?
Please do.
This is a response to the town planner, Mr. Bill Scanlon's question regarding this issue. This is the reply of town council. Hi, Bill, I stand by my email response from last year in the Stevens Mill project, I'm sorry, that the Stevens Mill project may be subject to a simple majority vote if the planning board finds that the project is A, a mixed use, B, in a center of commercial activity, and C, dedicates at least ten percent of the residential units as affordable. If I recall, this project will offer residential apartments as well as a conference slash community center for some retail component. If this has not changed, then it is a mixed use development. The MCOD bylaw requires ten percent of the rental units to be affordable, and the developer has agreed to provide such affordable units. The only other factor is whether a project is located in a quote "center of commercial activity" unquote, which as I mentioned previously is not defined in chapter forty-eight as amended by the Housing Choice Act. Lacking such a definition, it is my opinion that the planning board may determine that this project is located in an area of commercial activity, given the underlying industrial zoning, its proximity to Main Street slash West Main Street slash Route twelve, and the presence of several businesses in the area. If the planning board finds that this project is in a center of commercial activity, then it qualifies for a simple majority under the Housing Choice Act. Please contact me if you have any further questions, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, the way I read this, it seems like the only decision we have to make tonight is whether or not the planning board believes that this project lies in a commercial, commercial district.
Mr. Chairman.
Or an, or quote "an area of commercial activity."
Mr. Chairman, if I may, when Mr. Wetroba was reading that, thought went to looking at the Dunkin' Donuts, Dippin' Donuts parking lot on a Saturday morning, and if that isn't commercial activity, then I don't know what is. And a lot of it, and not necessarily confined to the parking lot. I don't have any pictures to prove the point, but I submit that this is definitely an area of commercial activity, at least in the town of Dudley. I, I do, there is something about this change from the, you know, to the simple majority as opposed to the two-thirds. I, I think that erodes local control to some extent, but I do agree that this is in fact commercial act, an area of commercial activity.
Chairman, thank you. Town planner sent us, looks like it's possibly a PowerPoint from the Citizens Housing and Planning Association. Another one of the items that was mentioned in here that we have not talked about was eligible locations. And eligible locations are defined as areas that by virtue of their infrastructure, transportation access, existing underutilized facilities or location make them highly suitable locations for residential. I would like to argue that we don't meet any eligible, of the eligible locations due to the infrastructure and transportation access, and I think that the commercial activity, yes, even though there's a Dippin' Donuts next to it, there really isn't anything else over there. I think the commercial is, is further away, I think it's.
You got Dunkin' Donuts right in front of it, you got Napa Auto Parts right across the street, you got gas station right across the street.
Dollar General, I mean, it, it, okay, if you're looking at it in terms of Madison Avenue, it's not commercial activity, but if you're looking at it in terms of Dudley, that is commercial activity. I mean, the, the core commercial activity in Dudley, as I understand it, is pizza and donuts, and you got them there.
Find me a busier intersection than that intersection that.
It didn't say busiest intersection, it said commercial activity, and I would argue that there's commercial activity further down into Webster and further down closer to the parking.
We're not talking about Webster, we're talking about in Dudley.
We're talking commercial activity.
In Dudley.
You got Napa across the street.
There was split nairs.
Okay, what about the, what about the?
I've spoken, I'm not concerned.
The thing, the thing we just, the town just voted on so that basically businesses can actually build up that whole area. Yeah, the tax, sorry, I couldn't.
The intent of that was to increase commercial activity.
Absolutely, so the whole idea is for this to be the anchor point to build up that area.
And this should be a step in support of that.
To get more of these businesses to invest and build up their business.
Not convincing me. Right, would somebody want to, so basically we need a determination on if it's a commercial activity area or not, and that can be a simple majority of this board? All right, does somebody want to make a motion for that?
I'd like to hear from somebody, be it a town council or a town planner, something about the eligible location and the infrastructure.
We have town council's opinion right there, you're just ready to.
Yep, town council's opinion.
I will speak, once again, try to be clear, town council's opinion on infrastructure, transportation access, which was not mentioned in the.
Are you looking at the MBT, MBTA or the Housing Choices?
No, I'm not looking at that.
What section are you looking at?
Yeah.
When you want to entertain a motion?
I'll be ready to entertain a motion, it's whatever the board's pleasure. We can either entertain a motion or we can ask for another opinion from town council.
Well, I can, I can make the motion, and if nobody seconds it, then it dies right there.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to make a motion that the planning board of Dudley take a vote to designate the Stevens Mill complex as an area of commercial activity in the town of Dudley.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye abstain.
Right. Opposed, opposed.
Okay, so we have three, one.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, so just so you know, we got, we are going to, for the next meeting, for your continuation.
Right.
We are going to move you to seven, seven PM, because we have, hold on a second, just a minute. Reopen at seven AM, yeah, excuse me, seven PM, because we have this, a solar landfill project at seven thirty.
Is that on the eleventh?
That would be, yeah, May eleventh meeting.
Okay, so I filled out the request for a continuation to that date, to that time.
All right, so seven, seven PM.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. Okay. Next on our agenda, number three, approval of minutes from April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Did anybody have a chance to review the April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two meetings?
I have.
I wasn't here, so I have to.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept or approve the meeting minutes of April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two as presented.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're in, except with one extension from Mr. Anderson.
Steven, yep.
Next item on the agenda, standard business, discussion status, finishing construction, acceptance, uncompleted, unaccepted subdivisions, streets, including Pierpon Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Piazza Road, Country View Estates, Tobin Farms, and Lyons Estates. And we have a note on Tobin Farms, transfer to the town of, apostle of land containing the dam. So this is in standard business number one.
Tap deep.
Yep, do we want to sign a couple of copies of those minutes while we?
Oh, yeah, I've got a copy here.
It's one copy, that's one out of the top.
You got one? Eighty minutes. I have one here. Three pages, right? I lost the page there.
It's for the both sides.
Both sides, oh, okay, that works out there.
Okay, so remember.
Where was the, the dam issue here?
No cussing here, come on, damn.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, so we had a, there was, it was on the planning, it was on the board of selectmen's agenda, so we, Bill did send a letter to them regarding our recommendation of Piazza Road, that it be accepted. And then. It's a few pages, the subdivision plan of Tobin Farms Estates, where it discusses a certain portion of the land of the. Deeded to the town where the, where the dam is located. I believe that's New Pond. New Pond Dam. So I think Bill was asking for us to make a motion that we recommend the town accept that piece of land that was part of the subdivision, because I think they need to do some work on the dam, and if they don't own the property, they.
Mr. Chairman, I would so move.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion.
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
So, we're, we're, this is coming from town administrator?
It was from.
Nope, this is certified, I have to notice from the.
Just want to make sure we're clear, I don't want to, I don't want to be on record as voting to accept a dam unless that's really the only solution. We fell for this once before.
I'd like to know if there's any kind of checklist that we have to go through before we accept a dam.
You had a dam over by where?
I can't find it. Two, do you have anything printed out from an email from Bill about this? On the dam?
I think he's want to continue with.
Yeah, there was, there was a, his recommendation.
Okay, let me read this, let me read this email from our town planner, Mr. Scanlon. You'll see an item next to the Tobin Farm on agenda, this involves a transfer of, transfer to the town of land on which the New Pond Dam sits. This is one of several dams the town acquired from Stevens Linen in nineteen ninety-five. It was part of the subdivision approval. I'd like a recommendation from the planning. I'd like a recommendation from the planning board to the selectmen that the town accept the land. By way of background, I'm including the 2002 endorsed record, recorded plan of Tobin Farms on sheet two. By the left margin, you will see a blow up of the area to be transferred to the town. Immediately above the drawing is a lengthy note which describes the intent for the town to ultimately acquire the property. I have a question about the actual size of the parcel, which the plan says is 3.5 acres. So in the motion, please do not reference the acreage. The point of this is so that the town will own the land on which the dam sits for repairs and maintenance.
Okay, so I understand. So actually, it was funny, I was just joking to, about that, we fell for this one before. Actually, it's the same gag. The Stevens Lennon dams, but by some snafu, the town owns the dam but not the land under it?
Correct.
Okay, that's.
But in the plan for Tobin Farms, it was deemed that it was going to go to the town.
Okay.
And all we're doing is voting to recommend that to the selectmen.
Yeah, sure, no, I don't have a problem, I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't, town already owns the dam, so.
Right.
Definitely wants the land under it.
Right, but Bill is saying that there is a question as to how much land there's, actually is there. The plan says 3.5 acres, it may be more or less.
So we just worded it, we just worded the motion, just say the land.
The land on which the dam is.
Yeah.
Built.
Built.
Or existing.
Did you want to make that motion, Mr. Wetroba? Sounded like you had the wording pretty much in place.
Oh, really? Gee, I was kind of at a loss actually, but.
I would just tie the motion into this plane here.
Excuse me.
Let me try.
Yeah, why don't you give it a shot?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we recommend the transfer to the town of the parcel containing the dam, the New Pond Dam. As noted in the approved plan of the Tobin Farms Estate, the second drawing, note regarding New Pond Dam and parcel encompassing dam.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I believe the motion would be to recommend to the Board of Selectmen, as I understood it.
Yep.
And we're not accepting it as such, we're just recommending to them.
Yeah, I mentioned recommend the transfer, but I didn't mention to the Board of Selectmen, so we have, so amended.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, so that takes care of it. Getting back to inspections associated with site plans, we have legacy landing, Country Club Estates, no, Country Club Acres, sorry, SEP Solar Oxford Avenue, JDND 24 Oxford Avenue. I don't think we have anything else on that, I didn't see anything in the email. Planner's not here, comments from the planning board, does anybody have any comments they'd like to share?
I would, Mr. Chairman. In viewing the Board of Selectmen's meeting, the meeting having been this past Monday, presentation was made identifying what was characterized as open space in the town of Dudley. And looking at the presentation and the numbers that were presented, a large part of that falls under Chapter 61, 61A, or 61B, or 61 forestry. Identified in there, I believe by the town manager, was 34.78% of the town land as being open space. Approximately 27% actually is Chapter 61. Now, I think the impression that people may have been left with was that that was open space and would forever and a day, if you will, be open space. And that's not the case with Chapter 61. Things can go out of Chapter 61 and be developed commercially at some point. I understand there are some hoops and hurdles that have to be cleared, but it's not mean, and I think the, I think, I don't want to go too much into intent, but I, as I saw the presentation, it seemed to lead one to believe that those rolling hills would forever be pristine and never touched by shovel or man.
Mr. Chairman.
Not sure where the town manager was going with that, although I think he may have overstated it somewhat.
Mr. Chairman, could I get some clarification? Could you tell me those percentages again?
34.78 is identified as open space. They actually, Mr. Wetroba, actually, that was included, the, I think roped off with caution tape, parking lot, playground area over here was included as open space.
Okay, all right, what was the other one? What's, what's in Chapter?
61A is 26.82% of that 34.
26.82?
Yep. And then forestry is .58, open space and recreation is 1.65.
So if you, if you take, if you take the 26.82 out of the 34.78, I could understand why you might be led to believe that it's just that small number that's in open space. However, I heard something here tonight that I wasn't aware of, which is that you can have land in conservation.
Mm-hmm.
Under 61A. So it's possible some of that land, some of this 26 point, whatever percent that's in 61A might also be in conservation.
I believe the only thing that we have in town at conservation is that one parcel. We got another area in there?
Yeah.
All right, so how many other acres are there?
You got to look at the zoning map, it tells.
All right, but I don't think you're going to find too much more in terms of the zoning map, as I believe. Mr. Wheelock?
I think I just want to clarify something, you said 26% is in 61A?
26, as presented by the town manager's assistant, Olivia.
26, that includes the APR land. APR and 61A are two different things altogether.
So for clarification's sake, if I may, they mixed apples and oranges. The APR is a separate entity which cannot be developed.
Cannot, impossible.
But then she not, should not have included that as part of 61A, is what you're suggesting.
I'm not sure, I was here that meeting and I can't remember exactly what she said.
There was no mention, if I may, there was no mention in the meeting of APR.
I can't remember, to be honest.
I do not recall any mention, the categories that were presented were 61A, 61B, and 61. But there was no mention, as I recall, of APR.
There's a lot of land in APR, more land in APR than there is in 61A.
All right. That was, unfortunately, I did not get that clarification from the presentation that was made by.
We've got a resident town, town, we got a townie here, resident expert on conservation land. I would like to hear his opinion, how do you think Dudley stacks up against other towns in Worcester County as far as percentages of town, of land?
I don't know the statistics for all that stuff.
Well, the reason why I ask is because my esteemed colleague, Mr. Clark, he had noted that when that study was given, when that report was given the other night, they only had data from Athol and.
There was a selection of towns.
There were only two towns, right? It was Athol and one other town.
I do, I do know that Dudley does have a lot more conservation land compared to other towns in, in the surrounding areas. And a lot of it, you know, a lot of it's owned by, you know, Mass Autobahn and, you know, Mass Autobahn's going to own another big chunk in a little while.
Matter of fact, I've got a stack of, of maps at home right now, all the trails, and my wife and I have made a, we made a pact that between the two of us, we are going to walk every single one of those before the, before the summer's over.
Well, that's what they're there for, we invite you to come and enjoy.
I was surprised, I, until I looked, I was surprised at how much there is out there in Dudley to walk as far as walking trails, scenic, you know.
Mr. Wheelock, how many, how many acres does Dudley Conservation Land Trust hold right now?
We're right around 400 acres.
400 acres.
You, if I remember correctly that presentation, you folks came off with a fairly small number of them, to be as a percentage anyway.
Well, yeah, but.
Right, okay.
We do our best.
And to the question in terms of how does Dudley rank, if you will, against other towns, I don't know how relevant that is. I think we should think in terms of our own town as opposed to, do we have plus or minus versus Oxford or Charlton, and what does that really mean? It's meaningless.
I, you know, I represent the land trust in Dudley, I, you know, I, I don't really care what.
I guess my point of relevance would be, we're doing okay.
Okay, well, if we're satisfied with that, but I, there, I, I would invite you to maybe take another look if you could at that presentation, because I don't recall anything referencing APR land at all. And she was very specific in terms of the Chapter 61 totals and percentage.
I can't remember, I can't.
Well, it's, it's, it's recorded, so we can always reference, you know, go back to it.
Well, a lot of it was based on tax title property too, they were trying to say that the town needs to do something with tax title property too.
Well, they're looking to find something they can turn over from revenue.
I don't know.
Which is not necessarily a bad thing.
Well, we'll see. Mr. Chairman, one other comment, if I may, unrelated to that matter, I did participate in or view a webinar regarding overlay districts. This was presented by Jim Robbins, who's the Westboro Town Planner, and the man has a rather impressive resume. One of the things that he mentioned several times, and I think it was in regards to legal issues that might pertain, is the connection between the overlay districts and the town master plan. I think we've identified in previous meetings that the master plan of the town of Dudley dates to 2022 years old, some portions of which are actually based on the 1990 census, if you will. So the age, if you will, of that master plan might possibly, if a legal issue were to come up, be of some concern with regards to overlay districts. The gentleman in his presentation seemed to consider that at least a question, an issue. Again, this Commonwealth requires, we have a master plan, but it doesn't require we update it, the cost would be, I think at this point, probably considered prohibitive, but I think it's somewhere down the road that needs to be addressed as an issue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and then the next thing we had was comments from the audience. Okay?
Thank you for staying with us.
Our next. You're going to crunch that data for us and get back to us?
Our next meeting date is going to be May 11th, 2022. We do have to vote on the approval of a consultant voucher, voucher, sorry, payment, payment of bills. This is for VIA, they did a review, a traffic study review on the Stevens Mill traffic plan. The total was $2,885.43. Would somebody like to make a motion to?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we pay the voucher for the amount indicated.
Okay, $2,885.43. Do we have a second?
I will second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. So Bill can pay that because we voted in that duty. And no other town notices? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, everybody, good night.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got to say, we're going to miss.